I call me in order with Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report of any executive sessions?
We're done, Hal.
Public comments or proclamation, sorry. We have a proclamation for National Drinking Water Week. Porcupine Pat is here in the water garden. Josh asked if we can do it in the middle because he's not here to turn his tripod.
How are you doing today?
So we have a proclamation for National Drinking Water Week. Whereas the 2025 National Drinking Water Week is celebrated from May 4th to May 10th, 2025. The safe and reliable water supply is critical to the success of the community. Creates jobs, attracts industry and investment, and provides for health and welfare for the citizen in ways ranging from disease prevention, fire suppression, and more. For the 40 years, American Water Works Association, AWWA, and its members, including the Schuylkill County Municipal Authority, have celebrated Drinking Water Weekend. Whereas April 11th, 2025, the Schuylkill County Municipal Authority formally to possible water company celebrates its 191st year of providing abundant clean sources of drinking water since 1834. So I just want to congratulate yous, you know, clean drinking water is a necessity of life to everybody and everybody needs it and we appreciate everything is due and, you know, conserve water is a good thing to do, so we appreciate it.
There's a little expression about you never appreciate the water until the well runs dry. Is that my experience when my grandfather was one of those folks? Like Larry said, that's something we take for granted. I'm lucky I have my own well on my own property. If I go somewhere, I always say, well, the water is almost as good as the home stuff. But once again, congratulations to the authority and Porcupine Pat. I can't say nothing about what this guy has done with the marvelous career. And he's still working part-time as a new to helping to do people out, so it's a great resource. We're lucky to have, Pennsylvania especially. If Calipari had figured out, they put a pipe in Pennsylvania and sucked water out of the sun.
We're thankful that it rained in the past few days and we're looking for more rain, so.
I'd just say the work that Schuylkill Municipal Authority has done and all the other water authorities around the county. If it wasn't for proper infrastructure, a lot of economic development wouldn't happen in this county. And I know you've been at the forerunner of that and different things. I've always gone back to prior to COVID when you took over the Deer Lake facility and extended water up to where the hospital is now. And again, having two facilities, actually three healthcare facilities in the county. And without that infrastructure, that building wouldn't be there. So we appreciate everything that yous have done and continue to do, so thank you very much.
We appreciate your recognition. Thank you.
Danny Galrith and GAO BR AI TH.
And the U of T.
Water Operations.
Public comment?
Thank you. He wanted yours also.
Morning.
Good morning. Steve Moyer, Mechanicsville. I have a couple of questions for the row offices. Are you both bosses of the row offices?
No, they're an elected position in Harrisburg that are covered by 1620 rights. And they are elected to those positions for a four-year term by the people. And as long as they don't commit high crimes or misdemeanors, the only thing you can do is have a person impeached that's elected to an elected office.
Okay.
So if they, you know, I know the issue is coming up, if somebody wants that changed, you have to lobby Harrisburg to have the Pennsylvania Constitution changed.
Well, good luck with Harrisburg doing anything.
Yeah, well, Larry said two of these former officers run their office. They have the rights to hire, fire, discipline their employees. We as commissioners don't have to be obligated to do that at all.
Okay.
You have no say in who they employ.
Hey, I know a lot of people got their reassessments. And I have three appointments tomorrow afternoon to do the informal because I don't live in New York City. And, you know, they doubled the price of my house.
Did your taxes double?
I mean, I don't know if they doubled.
It says right on the thing with your county tax.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it went up.
It did double?
I don't know if it doubled, but I can tell you it went up. And I'll take care of that tomorrow. So the other thing I wanted to ask you about, you know, it costs millions of dollars for that former commissioner. Didn't you people know that there was something going on while it was going on? That you didn't do something about it?
No, I wasn't in office. I wasn't. I knew the man most of my life and I did not, I have no idea.
Because, you know, that was like $7 million. And, you know, next year, that insurance is going to go up.
Well, that's necessarily, it might go up a little bit, but you have to understand we're in a consortium with other counties. And like a county paid out wrongful debt, it's in a consortium that approved. One county paid out wrongful debt. It was a $10 million policy, a $10 million payment. So we're all part of that same consortium. So it goes up minimally because other counties have other things that are claims on this. So it's not like homeowners insurance. It's not like we're a sole owner of a homeowner's policy.
Well, I can't believe that an insurance company is going to pay out $7 million for it not to have an effect on your whatever you belong to. I can't, I doubt that that's going to happen because insurance companies cannot do it. My last question is, when the Schuylkill County residents sued to have a new reassessment?
Three Schuylkill County residents sued. They found a nonprofit out of Philadelphia, which I can't remember the name of the nonprofit. Do you remember if they? There's a nonprofit out of Philadelphia and they are suing every county.
I got it.
It was the same nonprofit.
So my question is this, why did we resist it and fight it in court?
We did. We did.
You didn't?
Since 2018, we were fighting it up all the time. Every year, if I had a.
And I heard it cost a million dollars to fight it.
I don't know the exact number on.
Who would know that?
I would have to. I don't think it was a million. They said to continue fighting, it would be.
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand for an extra year. For an extra year, it would be a hundred thousand for an extra year. So I, maybe a couple hundred thousand. I don't think it would be a billion.
Why wouldn't we fight it though? I mean, wouldn't you be making it fair across the board for the rest of the residents?
If we would have fought it or did fight it?
If you, yeah, why did you fight it? Because supposedly the reassessment is going to make it fair across the board for everybody with the new prices of their house.
Because they felt that three people suing a county was, I guess, wasn't.
Yeah.
Wasn't, I think, you know, three people triggered a $7.5 million reassessment. And what the problem with reassessment is, and I keep saying this, it needs to be fixed in Harrisburg. They need to be done cyclical, three, five years. And then nobody will see a massive change in their value of their property in five years. But the caveat in that, and there is a draft bill in Harrisburg, is that in that five-year period, no, there's no more spot reassessments by school districts or spot appeals. That everybody's the same. So school districts can't go in and that's what throws our common little ratio out is them doing spot appeals. So in that five-year period, they won't be able to do that anymore.
Yeah. Well, that's.
And in the end, just to add on to that, we had a consultant that we called upon on this to say, should we continue fighting this? And basically with his experience and so forth, that if he had it with other counties saying, you can continue fighting, but you're going to go to court and probably lose because our ratios are so far, so far off. And again, then rather than three years extended, they could have put us on an accelerated, do it in two years or whatever, and would have thrown the price up. So we looked at that to make the decision. We didn't like it to begin with. But again, rather than putting money in there continuously and it was going to end up that we would have to do it anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah, I would think it would because you would certainly want it fair for everybody. Hey, and the last thing, I don't want to, you know, I was a worker all my life as in the military. I begrudge the workers nothing, but I see in the paper today that you just want to approve awards for people in the judge's office.
That's an adult probation and that is at the judge's discretion. It is money that comes out of supervision fund. That is not out of our general obligation. And it is, it's a fund that the head judge can use at her discretion to do things like that.
Well, then why do they, why do they need your approval?
It just has to be voted on by salary board. We're not, the commissioners aren't put in this case, so.
Because, I mean, honestly, we all got to start living way, way in our means. I mean, we have you guys. I had a 3% tax increase on my property for Potsville on top of your 18%. You know, it just can't keep going. I mean, I'm sorry, it just can't. I'm going to have to stop doing a couple of things to pay for the new tax increase next year. And then the year after, you know, you guys can do whatever you want. I mean, next year, you can't raise the taxes. But the year after that, and it's going to be at 100% of the value of the house, not 50%.
But it's still accordingly by mill. So if one mill right here generates 2.5 million, say after the reassessment, the mill generates 10 million, say we would need 2.5 million, you would raise it a quarter of a mill. Not, it's all numbers, it's all percentage. It's the same thing.
Well, you know, I just, you know, I'm trying to understand that. But I would just say that, you know, the county needs to live within their means. The city does, the state does, I mean. And then we have what's in the White House, you know, what that's going to cost us depending on their cuts. You know, what do you want the seniors to do? You know, they start cutting the Medicaid and, and food stamps that they get. What do you, you know, what do you want them people to do? And it's you guys, you guys are part, are responsible, the state and the federal and the city. At some point, our governments got to live within their means, just like we're going. But this increase is going to cost me money and I won't be able to do some things I used to do because we didn't live within our means. I appreciate your time.
Morning, George.
Good morning. George Nekovich, Palo Alto. Yes, you were telling Steve about George, George's thing that was settled, but it was only one case, right? He still has another case going, right?
There is no, there are not cases, there are EEOC complaints yet, but they're not full-blown court case yet, but we have, I believe, two. Well, no, one from George, one something else, and that's it.
Okay. Another thing is with the reassessment, yes, 26, they can't raise them, I heard. But what after that? 27. See, that's why you're telling people, oh, it's all right, don't worry about it. Don't, everything's going to be okay and we're going to fix it, you know, think just like we're hearing from the federal government, everything's going to be all right. When you're on a set income, it's not all right. I'm telling you right now, people are going to lose their homes. I said it from day one and I'll keep on saying it. They're going to lose their homes because what do you want the, I'm 73 years old now. Do you want me to go out and get two jobs? That's what I'm going to have to do to afford what's going on in this world. This is ridiculous. I worked my whole life and put into the system. And now because our wages back then, let's excuse my language, sucked. It, it just started improving in the last few years. And God bless all the people that are getting money and better jobs now. They need it to survive in this.
It's all relevant.
Yeah, I know it's all relevant, but I'm telling you, people are going to lose their jobs, our houses, right and left. It's not fair. You're seeing what's happening. This gentleman came up and spoke the truth. It's happening. You guys have to learn how to pull back on your belts. You can't just be freely spending money here and there. The roads in this town are terrible. I know you guys don't have nothing to do with that. I know that. It's a city of pots. But they get money too. It's ridiculous. Don't worry about bringing in concerts and stuff like that because it doesn't benefit us if it's not going for these roads and everything else. I'm telling you, this is not fair. This is not right. And I know if you're a billionaire, you can get to do whatever you want in this country, especially in this county. And I'm telling you, things aren't right. They're not fair. I hope and pray. I have my meeting Monday morning. And you're only telling what happened in county, just like Steve said. City, borough, all them are going to go out. And school is going to go out of the roof and it's just ridiculous. It is ridiculous. I don't care if mine only went up $56. What happens to all the other ones is going to go outrageous. What is the school tax going up this year? What's the school tax going up?
The lawyers say, and other cities in possible schools.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, that's what the problem is. You have to look at the full picture, not just part of the picture. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Morning, Jeff.
Morning. Jeff Dunkle, Palo Alto. Hopefully we get a couple of extra seconds in the three minutes because I've got a few things. Lisa Stevens, no update. Teresa Gaffney, no update. She's out drinking and partying all weekend but can't come to work during the week.
No, we, like the previous gentleman said, I.
I'm just, listen, I'm putting it on record because.
But I'm just saying, we can't investigate her for.
Well, you guys could. You guys could make.
That is not true.
Yeah, okay, I'll bring the paperwork next week. She should be convicted of a high crime. Should be fraud. Frauding the taxpayers is what she should be.
Talk to Michael Pay.
Okay, I'll be, I'll go right to his office after that. Also, let's see here, the adult probation office, which Mr. Moyer brought up. I think they deserve every dollar that they are proposing for them. And it is no taxpayer money, it's supervision fees that are paid in. So it's not money coming directly out of our pockets, the money that was budgeted. It's supervision fees that are paid in. So just to clarify that so people aren't misunderstanding the figures when they see them. Speaking of the reassessment, you got a lot on that. So in 2018, if we didn't fight it, the values would be relatively reasonable, not during the inflated process. So we spent a couple hundred thousand fighting it. We're not sure how much. Could have spent another hundred thousand to fight it, but decided not to. So now the people suffer. I had a property that I bought in 2016 for $4,000, invested about $30,000 into it. It's now praised at $167,000 at 100% of the market.
How much did the taxes go up?
Almost doubled.
What's the, what were the taxes?
360 to 640.
So you're going to pay $640 on the house and county taxes?
Correct. That's just the county, yeah. Then another one was.
Where was the house to?
Palo Alto.
Palo Alto, okay. Because I know some people in Palo Alto like that.
Well, I'd like to know who because everybody over there is, especially some of the.
Josh.
The higher end.
I can use Josh as an example. Josh, did yours go down or up?
Twenty-five.
Yep, so.
That was probably a backdoor deal for reporting property.
Yep, that's what it is. That's what it is.
I have another one. I'm going to see a negative story, Josh.
Hey, if we could do that, Jeff, yours would be like $12,000.
Well, here's the thing. I know when you come in, I know when you come in and said to George, there's only one up $54, but it went out through homestead. I was waiting for you to say, Mr. Dunkle, yours went up $12 instead of. The reason why you didn't say it is because you looked and it went up over 300.
Well, Jeff, mine are going up. I'm paying more taxes.
As they should. I have another one. Potsville. It's just the $5,000 back then. Paid $11,000 for it. Now it's over $80,000.
And how much did the taxes go up on that one?
Uh, more than tripled.
So how much were your taxes?
A hundred and it's 315.
So your tax went from $100 to $315. So now what's, how much could you sell that house worth at that?
Actually, I just looked into selling it about two months ago. They said between 40 and 45.
Forty, 45,000. So you made, what'd you say you paid for it for?
No, I paid 11 for that.
11,000?
But that's not counting what I put in. But that's not counting what I put into it.
Okay.
You know what I mean? But that's forty-five thousand is what I can get on the market for.
Did you schedule, well, this, is this commercial?
Informal doesn't mean anything.
For, are they doing the informal news for commercial yet? I didn't think they are yet.
No, but that that would be residential, but even if it's a rental, it's residential. He said that the informals have nothing to do on it.
On that, if you're gonna go to the formal.
So anyway, uh, it's a disaster for everybody across the board.
No, I don't, the people that are going up, yes, Jeff. Overall, the people that are going down, they're not gonna come in and complain. My taxes, my taxes went down. I want you to raise it. Nobody has called me yet and said.
I agree with you, but there's gonna be houses that then went down fifty or a hundred thousand dollars in value that probably shouldn't have. There's houses that I know that in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, they were built for two hundred and forty thousand and now they're saying they're eight hundred and forty thousand. And I know the one gentleman looked to sell his place and they said.
Doug Blitwiler, has he called you about this?
Dead wrong. Dead wrong. This, this is in the township outside of Pottsville. Yep, and this was, uh, he looked to sell his last year and they said four hundred and ten thousand would be done.
When you go to the formal appeal, that you can bring all that information in to show that.
But he said it has to be within the last three months. So now these people got to go get comps or reassessments.
Or sales around their house. It's a little different.
I just think it's wrong that these people have to go do all this work on their own for something that is put together very horribly. I mean.
I agree and it needs to be fixed in Harrisburg.
I agree, but we keep passing the buck to everybody else, not this horrible company that we have.
Well, I can't help that that group was hired. And we're trying to hold them accountable and we're trying to make sure the information, like our chance of assessment notices, we made sure they put the values on so people knew. A lot of counties just sent them out and said, your house went from a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand without that extra line.
When will they know, when will they know the school and the municipal? Is that gonna be included in the final one?
On the final one, we're looking at trying to put on a total of what your taxes were in twenty twenty-five.
Will the people have a chance to appeal that then? Or is that gonna?
It's gonna be on that, we're trying to see if we can put it on the formal, you get, you get a formal notice to change. And then we're gonna try to put on, we're looking at, seeing if we can figure it out for everybody, if we can put the school district, municipality and your county on. So you have an idea because some school districts, they are going down. Like in Tamaka School District, most of the people that I've talked to in Tamaka, they're coming down their county taxes. That means they were over assessed. There's one guy, I know his house went from a value of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars total up to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. His taxes, only those county taxes, only a hundred bucks. Over a thirty-year period. You know what I mean? Since the last reassessment. That's the problem, it's the thirty years.
I get it, but the figures are way off. I mean, the property that I have now, I just looked to sell, hundred and sixty-six, nine is what it's uh, at a hundred percent of. I'm lucky to get eighty thousand for it.
Well, and I, and there has been cases that I've, I've found it, like I had one in Tamaka where they assessed the house to two parcels. Like there were two back-to-back parcels and one, I guess, assessor was up on the upper street and one was on the lower street. And this guy shows me his thing and he says, how can my pavilion be as worth, worth as much as my house? And when they looked into it, here the house, there's gonna be mistakes. And I, I want everybody, do you think your value's too high? Like mine, they're pretty much close. Like, some of the people that I've talked to, they're very close on what they think, yep, that's what I can sell my house for. Some of them, you know, I had a state representative come down and they said, man, value my house.
It's his job to do something.
Yeah, well, that's what I said to him. And when, when they said, hey, how, how can we fix this? I went, pointed to him, you're in Harrisburg, you can fix this.
So the change of taxing at the fifty percent to a hundred percent, didn't that need to be voted on by the county?
No, that was changed, that was, that I believe that was changed, that you have to do it that way. I don't think you're allowed to value any more fifty percent of the value.
Okay, so it's mandated to be that way?
I think so.
But it wouldn't matter because if it was fifty percent, the mills would be twice as high.
Yeah, so the mills, if the mills come, if you do a hundred percent, the mills.
I'm just saying, but I'm just saying the value boots is, this one now that I have is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, so I'm gonna be taxed on that forever at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So in two years, in twenty twenty-seven, when these people get the gut punch like I'm gonna, and it's gonna be, everybody raising it whatever they want because it's fair game, now I'm taxed on that hundred, hundred percent.
Yeah, but you're taxed on that hundred, what'd you say it was?
Hundred and sixty-seven.
Hundred and sixty-seven. You're taxed on that, but a mill is worth more. So like, like I was trying to explain for, say the county needs two point five million dollars in twenty twenty-seven, now we would raise it one mill. Okay?
Right.
After the reassessment, we would raise it a quarter mill or less. So it's all, it's all relative in the.
I get that part, but, yeah.
And I agree, some values, I believe some houses are overvalued, Jeff, and I want everybody to go through the, uh, you think your house is overvalued and you think it's saying, do your due diligence. You can bring in comps. You don't have to necessarily hire a lawyer for the formal. You can bring in comp sales around your houses, what other values are. There's one in uh, New Philadelphia, they called me about it, that they just bought their house within the last two years. Everybody around them's valued lower, their house is in the middle of it, doesn't have as much of the houses around them, and their value's higher than the house right next door. So I told them, I said, do the informal, make sure your information's right and to do the formal appeal. Like I'm encouraging everybody, that if you think your value's off, go to the former, the formal review appeal.
So the, the, do we have a certification date yet on when they'll be certified?
No, we haven't set that yet.
Okay.
It's uh, July. The official notices go out sometime after July, it has to be certified.
And it, at this point, I imagine it doesn't matter if there's a, a vote against it or all three of you say no. Because I spoke with Mr. Barr in the hallway.
No, Mr. Barr's wrong. We can vote, not certify.
Okay, because he, when I spoke to him in the hallway that day and you, you ran into me afterwards.
He's wrong.
He said specifically, and his exact words were, Larry's grandstanding. There was no way that any vote.
That is not true.
That's why I wish he was here today, because I could put him on the spot. But he said it doesn't matter if you don't vote no or all three of you don't vote no, it was court ordered and it must go through.
No, that's not true.
So it could still not be certified. It still could be halted. Okay, uh, and just to clarify for everybody, the May fifth deadline on the back was an error. Uh, some people didn't even receive them yet.
Oh, I didn't get mine.
And it, and it's saying that the May fifth deadline, so hopefully the media can take care of that.
Doesn't say that, it says, please make an appointment by May fifth.
And if you, and if you.
Doesn't say deadline.
And if you read that, what are you gonna take that as?
Well, I'm saying, I, my.
What, what is the average person?
Let me finish, let me.
How many calls did you get about that? Because I got about thirteen or fourteen.
I got a whole bunch too. My neighbors called me. I said, I, I, I called.
So, so, so let's.
My television, I said.
Let's clarify for the people, Boots.
Say, it doesn't say deadline. It says, please call by May fifth.
So what is the deadline, Boots? What is the deadline?
Forty days after you got the thing in the mail.
And how do you know when you got them? People didn't even get the uh, data.
The formal's forty days. This one, trust me, I will make sure it's out there.
I, I asked.
Like I said, I didn't even get, I didn't even get mine yet.
I get that, Gary, but I asked, I asked him, I said, he said, well, that's not a hard day. We're a little, uh, we could fluctuate with it. But I said, what is the hard day? What, when do you cut it off? You know what I mean? There, there's gotta be a point where you stop this and move to your next process.
Make sure they do it as long as they possibly can.
There, there's been at least, and I can't pull it up on my phone, but I could show you afterwards. There's so many people that didn't even get the data verification form.
Oh.
They're like, what are you talking about?
And I didn't get, like I said, I didn't get my, I didn't get my paperwork yet in the mail.
All right, I wanna move on, so I'm not tying these up. Who? The appeals board. Do we have a list of those people?
That will be being provided. They're working on for the formal appeals?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna work on still getting all the lists together. And when we do, we'll make a.
And are these people gonna be involved in real estate?
Uh, some of them are in real estate. They have to take, as far as I know, they have to take a course, training to be on it.
Now, Tim, now, Tim Barr said at the Pottsville High School that all they need to do is meet him and take a four-hour training session and they're good enough to be on an appeals board. So now, I think if somebody's.
We're looking for people with qualifications that are in real estate or banking or kind of construction, construction, that have some type of it.
Do you guys have to approve those?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah.
Okay. Uh, when can the taxpayers look in their neighborhoods or a house across the street and see what theirs went up or down compared to ours? I know that was said it was gonna be done. I asked him on Monday, uh, he said he's unsure if it's even gonna be done. And I know Larry, you were able to look at George's and report that at a meeting. When can we look at each others and see that it's being fairly done and hey, we can compare apples and oranges?
I think some of that's up, if I'm not mistaken, I'll check into it.
Everyone I, okay, everyone I looked up, I can. Uh, Jeff, yes. I, I'm trying, but he, he interrupted me quite a bit too to answer questions.
I'll give you time to talk.
Uh, Tim's not here. I wanted to know if all of Pottsville should have received theirs. I have dozens of people that said they live in Pottsville, they didn't get theirs yet.
You only got dozens of calls?
But people need the answers. That's why I'm trying to.
I, I agree.
Uh, like, here, many folks called the commissioners. Nobody was in for last week, this week.
I've been, that's not true.
A person answered the phone and said, I'll relay it to one of the commissioners. People wanna know, why is it not all the commissioners so that when somebody comes in, they can get back to them? I called Vision the other day. You call a Vision number, I wanted to reach Tim Barr, you can't get anybody other than the informal review number. And then you're on hold. I waited seventeen minutes for him to come back and tell me, Tim will give you a call back. And I, I had a very good forty-two minute conversation with him to get some answers, but uh, the other thing is the informal appeals, apparently they're just hiring people to work from home to do them. Are they the same people that are doing the field reports? That are working from home doing the informal? That's what I'm just trying to figure out. And a homestead for the county, is that, some people are asking about that, is that?
We're still, we're still getting information on it to see if we can legally do it, the county know about it.
But the homestead that's through the assessment office now?
It'll be the same one. If you apply for the school homestead, if the county does it, you'll automatically get it. And the only time somebody has to reapply then is if you s- buy a house, if you're a new.
Different one, okay.
If you have to apply.
Now, the school one, is that extended till September or did I misunderstand?
I'm not sure what the school district stuff, Jeff, if it is. I, I don't know.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Morning, Lynn.
Morning. Uh, Melinda Dibbert, North Mannheim Township. Uh, gonna keep beating this dead horse. Okay. Uh, I'm wondering if certain uh, real estate tax relief programs are available across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, um, or if only certain programs are available to the city and county of Philadelphia. Uh, I'll let you know what I'm talking about.
Sales tax. Talk about sales tax?
Real estate tax relief. Uh, in the city and county of Philadelphia, they have the following types of programs for real estate tax relief. Senior citizens' real estate tax freeze program. Longtime owner occupants program. Uh, you have to have been an owner of your home for at least ten years to qualify for that one and meet certain uh, salary requirements. Uh, active duty tax credit, real estate tax deferral program, property tax abatement, owner occupied real estate tax payment agreement. Uh, the homestead exemption, which maybe a lot of people may, may or may not be familiar with in our county. And then certain programs, if you, say for instance, if you qualify for the longtime owner occupants program, you cannot have both that, uh, receive those benefits along with the homestead exemption. So have we looked into any of that?
Yes. So Philadelphia do also has a higher sales tax that goes to the general fund. I've been asking why other counties, it needs Harrisburg to fix these. But Philadelphia is allowed to do a lot more, but we're not because of their classification of the county and the city. Like the, you pay eighty percent sales tax there that goes to their general fund, where here, we can't put it up. Because I, I asked why we can't. And we're not allowed to because of our class or our city. They have ability to do more of those programs than we have. Now, some of the programs, I think we have a few of them, but not, not the ability that Philadelphia, Alabama County does.
Okay, um, I have a son who lives in uh, Lancaster. And so I checked, they are currently going through a reassessment there, which will take effect in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, they have different programs there, uh, along with what we have here, Clean and Green, the Homestead or Farmstead Exclusion, uh, disabled veterans assistance and senior citizen rent rebate program is listed on their website.
Seniors now, we have veterans now, we have.
We have the veterans in the rent rebate program.
Okay. Have we gotten the information out? Because I'm hoping that.
For, my information's been out for a long time, because I know my parents really became seniors. They applied for some of the stuff.
Okay, um, one thing I would like to point out, and I know Larry, you've talked about this, but, I mean, I think the whole way that this reassessment stuff came about was contrived and I don't know, I guess I won't say illegal, but it was definitely contrived um, a- across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I think, uh, to force the issue. Because it's my understanding, the original homeowners who uh, allowed their properties to be used are either dead or they no longer reside in, in Schuylkill County.
One died, one moved, I believe, and one is still in the county.
Uh, okay, you might want to check that. I don't think so.
They were as of last year.
Okay. Another problem, uh, which, you know, Jeff alluded to this, the artificially inflated property values by leaving that COVID year purchases, by leaving that year in for sales prices, that has absolutely skewed things. I'll give you an example. In my neck of the woods, what we would call a shimmy shack out there sold during COVID. It probably should have not sold for any more than around eighty-five or ninety thousand, and that would be pushing it. A couple came down from Boston, double income, can work from home, and they gladly paid three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that shimmy shack. That is what we are going to be faced with, and I have not received my information yet. So I don't even know what, what's going on with my home. But they are absolutely going to take sales prices like that and compare my house with what that little shack sold for. Ha- have we even thought about maybe taking twenty twenty off the table and maybe even twenty twenty-one? And, and instead start looking, look at twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Because the way Tim Barr explained it, they have to take, is it three years of sales? He told me three years.
I thought they look at five. So I'm just saying, I thought they said they look at five years.
Uh, okay, well, he told me three. So, and you know, as commissioners, you guys may not be affected to the same level that a lot of our taxpayers out here may be. Because I believe all three of you have your so-called side hustles.
No, I don't.
And maybe Larry, you, you don't really do too much in your garage or whatever. Maybe you're not really bringing in that much business.
I rely, right now, I am a full, I guarantee.
At least your compadres on either side do have their other full-time businesses along with their commissioner's salary and benefits. I'm not sure, okay. I'm not sure how much more the taxpayers of Little Old Schuylkill County can handle. I pointed this out a couple of months ago when I contacted my insurance agent, when I found out our homeowners and auto policies with no claims whatsoever, been with this company for almost thirty years now. And our insurance rates went out the wazoo. When I contacted our agent, she said, yeah, pretty well, every insurance company that asked for it got a twenty percent across the board increase in rates. I don't, I don't know what families and people living on a fixed income are supposed to do. Increased insurance cost, anything after COVID, construction, anybody that even thinks about wanting to improve their property or make repairs or whatever, you're, you're getting stuck left and right. And even health insurance, which I know the county has pretty good uh, health insurance, but most people out there that have their own health insurance, either through their employer, not the county or the state, et cetera, uh, you're probably on a high deductible health plan and looking at at least a five thousand to perhaps eight thousand dollar per person deductible before the insurance will even start kicking in to pay for anything. I, I don't know how people are supposed to uh, to make it. So you're saying it does have to be voted on to certify this reassessment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Can we move on with the meeting? Grant writers?
Good morning, Commissioner Sherwood. On behalf of grant writers, approval to advertise for demolition project in New Philadelphia. Bits will be due in the controller's office on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at three P M. The bid opening will take place Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five at nine A M. Approval to advertise for twenty twenty-five CDBG hearings for Butler Township, Minersville, Pine Grove Township, Schuylkill Haven, Shenandoah, Tamaka, Wayne Township, West Penn Township and Schuylkill County. The next five are all cooperation agreements. The first is with the Borough of Palo Alto for a CDBG ADA project. The second is with Riley Township for a CDBG waterline project. The second is with Riley Township for a CDBG waterline project. The third is with Delano Township for a demolition project at one thirty-one to one thirty-three Railroad Street. Next is with the borough of Frackfield for demolition projects at four forty-three West Walnut Street and four forty-five West Pine Street. And the final cooperation agreement is with the borough of New Philadelphia for the demolition project at forty-six forty-eight Water Street. The next three are all approval to award contracts. The first one is sixty-six thousand fifty-three dollars to Spots Brothers Incorporated for a CDBG ADA project in Butler Township at the LaBelle Playground and the Spring Street Play Area. Next is in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars to Spots Brothers Incorporated for a CDBG eighty-eight project in West Penn Township at Zion Park. And finally, thirty-nine thousand fifteen dollars to Triple A Services LLC for a CDBG ADA project in Palo Alto at the Bacon Street and Savory Street Park. And finally, approval of a revision to the two thousand and twenty-three CDBG program moving one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents from the Palo Alto Bacon Street Recreation Line item to the Palo Alto Savory Park Improvements Line item. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill State?
Good morning.
Good morning. I am seeking approval to award the bid and enter into an agreement with Shane Hough Excavating Bloomsburg, PA for the demolition project along North Bauer Street, East Lloyd Street, and North Lehigh Street in Shenandoah in the amount of ninety-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Number one, or is that case down? More information?
I just have one item, the motion to, uh, for a memorandum of understanding, Locust Ridge Two LLC, Portland, Oregon, place radio and transmission lines at their Avengrid L two R met tower site located in Union Township.
I'll make a motion for that one question.
Second, other question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes, one quick, that's the one.
That's the new tower going up in Union Township.
A Shenamal. This is the one you're putting on the window?
Yes.
It's a tower, it's in the windmill series, it's a tower by itself we're adding, as opposed to buying a tower we're adding.
Right, we're, we're using their.
Their, their, they're gonna let it happen for free.
Yeah, on the, on the tower, yeah, no money.
They're giving us towers, they're giving us the courtesy, so.
Yeah.
There's no, there's, there's no cost, it's, it's to help with the communications up.
Yeah, we, 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 we will put a shelter up.
Yeah.
But we don't have to build a tower, we're just putting a transmission line and the antennas on it.
Right above my house is a row antenna, windmill's one spot of the tower by itself. And like you say, it's, they're allowed to actually offer a guy a house for you charged to put this unit on there, so.
That's correct, yeah, just a memorandum of understanding.
Yep.
Someone say this one first, Chris.
Children, youth?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Carl.
Carl Rumbles, children, youth, today we have seven items. Uh, first, we have, uh, an advisory board matter. We are requesting to appoint Pastor David Brady to a three-year term on the children, youth advisory board. The term period of May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five through May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-eight. Next is an addendum with Kids Peace National Centers Incorporated, Schenexville, Pennsylvania. Uh, the addendum is to the original agreement dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. And this would add foster parent reimbursement, uh, the visitation and discharge planning for youth during residential treatment. Uh, this, uh, is a case-specific per diem rate of twenty dollars. Uh, the following four items are all addenda that are identical in function. They extend the term period at current rates and terms, and each amends the end date to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. And those addenda are with All Shred of Moscow, Pennsylvania, with Penn Keshar Incorporated of Potswell, Pennsylvania, with Language Aligned Services Incorporated out of Monterey, California, and with the Children's Service Center of Wyoming Valley, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. Next, we have, uh, uh, we have two agreements. First, we're requesting approval of an agreement with Perseus House Incorporated of Erie, Pennsylvania. They offer residential services at three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eight cents per diem. Shelter services at three hundred and twenty-six dollars and six cents per diem. And transitional living services at two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents per diem. And this agreement would be with a term July first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Finally, we are requesting approval of an agreement with Pennsylvania Counseling Services Incorporated of Lebanon, Pennsylvania. They offer psychosexual evaluations at a per-unit cost, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Individual or family therapy sessions at a per-unit cost, one hundred and thirty dollars. Polygraphs at a per-unit cost, four hundred and fifty dollars. This agreement would also have a term July first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
On alcohol?
Morning.
Morning. Just have one item, uh, requesting approval of amendment number one to our current grant agreement, number four one zero 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 eight six six five one between the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs and Schuylkill County. The purpose of this amendment is to extend the current term of the agreement to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. It's due to uncertainty of future directive from the State Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance offer, everything's posted.
I just have a question on that budget, gentlemen.
Oh, sorry, M I S, sorry, Connor. I forgot Connor.
Right, you know, ask me a question.
Morning.
Morning. Connor Matts, M I S, uh, requesting approval to purchase P R T G network monitoring software through Shadow Technologies. This is a three-year subscription billed annually, the price per year is two thousand one hundred and six dollars and two cents.
Okay, just on the coroner's office, uh, it's coming out of contingency. He did not have that in his budget for, for this year prior to that?
He did not, we put an amount in there this year based on there was gonna be an increase, so, uh, we put ten thousand in that budget, that's not sufficient to cover the rental agreement that you approved last week. So this approval of twenty-seven six.
Is it covered really? I know that, I just wanted to know. Why it wasn't put in his budget, that's.
That is correct, we're not aware of that.
And I know he was doing the work out there, it should have been. Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
County Minister, County Minister?
Number eleven.
Yes, it's the approval of the request to ratify the Destiny approved contract for the month of April, and I'm asking for approval at this time.
Motion approved. Second, any questions?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And on behalf of Luzern Schuylkill Workforce Development Board, approval of the record and date to appoint John Powers Potsville as a member of the Luzern Schuylkill Workforce Development Board as president of commercial insurance lines, Strobas Insurance Agency. Mr. Powers qualifies as a representative under the private sector business category, representing the insurance industry sector and holding optimum policymaking authority. Mr. Powers shall represent the business category serving Schuylkill and Luzern County workforce development area. Mr. Powers was previously appointed to the board, uh, under his former order.
Uh, good morning Commissioners, uh, seeking approval of a side agreement with Schuylkill County Court-related Union Unit One to implement payment of performance slash retention bonuses to staff employees of adult probation department as initiated by the court system and approved by the county salary board. The employees are to be paid on their anniversary date or as soon as practicable after that date with funds approved by the president judge from the offender's supervision fund. The payments will range from one thousand to three thousand, depending on years of service, all payments will be made in two thousand and twenty-five. And approval of adjusted rates to an existing contract with Lehigh Valley Health Network as of May two thousand and twenty-five for occupational medicine and employee screening services. There are hundreds of possible services under this contract, with some, uh, prices increasing and some decreasing. For the frequently used pre-employment screening, the new fees that will most likely be used, standard physical, sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, rapid ten panel drug screen, fifty-four dollars and twenty-six cents, observed specimen no charge, and U D S ten panel with M R O, fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Personnel act. Uh, and the prison, the promotion of Michael Buchanan to Warden, uh, rate ninety-five thousand, effective five twelve twenty-five, he's coming from Deputy Warden. The promotion of John Bowman to Deputy Warden, rate is ninety thousand, effective five twelve twenty-five, he's coming from Captain. And promotion of Kyle Fair to Captain, uh, the rate is eighty-four thousand, effective five twelve twenty-five, he's coming from Lieutenant. Uh, and human resources, uh, promotion Heather Garrett to risk management slash H R specialist, rate is fifty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars thirty-five cents, effective five seven twenty-five, from H R specialist assistant risk, risk manager. Uh, the appointment of Heather Wentz as Office Support Secretary, rate is fourteen point two eight zero five, effective five nineteen twenty-five per the contract. And the appointment of Deana Gunther, uh, Office Support Secretary, rate is fourteen point two eight zero five, effective five twenty-seven twenty-five, that is per the contract. In planning and zoning, the appointment of Alex Starlington as an intern, at the rate of fifteen dollars an hour, effective five twenty-one twenty-five, that's temporary position, twelve weeks. I also have some information on that. And the clerk of courts, the appointment of Joanne Halpin as a clerk, free, effective five nineteen twenty-five per the contract. And rescind the par of Stephanie Kinley, uh, from the clerk three position, effective five five twenty-five. In the district attorney's office, two items, the appointment of Luke Joyce as a clerk, effective five twenty-seven twenty-five, temporary position, fourteen weeks. And the appointment of Ashley Horning, District Justice Assistant One, effective five nineteen twenty-five, that is per the contract. In juvenile probation, uh, five items, the appointments of William Mondrayne, Kelly Goodman, Donovan Copeland, Lauren Hammer, and Jenna Van Fleet. They're all going into site coordinator positions, effective six two twenty-five, those are temporary ten-week positions. In the controller's office, the transfer of Angela Morris to accountant slash podder associate, effective five nineteen twenty-five, coming from accountant slash podder fixed assets. Two items in the sheriff's office, the appointment of Grant Culver and Tabitha Ward as unpaid interns, effective five twelve twenty-five, approximate end date, eight fifteen twenty-five. Two items in the public defender, the appointments of Melissa Malarky and Justin Trevino as unpaid interns, effective five twenty-seven twenty-five. Uh, Malarky is temporary for two hundred and fifty hours, Trevino temporary one hundred hours. Uh, the usual restrictions, all kinds, pending drug test and physical, and all actions involving salary board, court for positions being created, are pending salary board approval.
Plan motion on the three prison, human resources?
I'll make a motion to reapprove the three prisons, uh, requests and the three human resources requests.
Okay. No question?
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Any new business? Can I also agree?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Salary board, what are the executive sessions?
They're done, help.
Public comment for salary board?
Jeff, Uncle Palo Alto, uh, with the hiring freeze, is that falling out now or is unfroze? Are we back to hiring people?
These are open positions, I need to be hired, the only thing is, you know, they're gonna leave these for, especially courts.
So if there's a complaint that needs to be filed against someone in the courthouse, is there a form that they, someone can file with?
They can send out a written report for the human resource.
Okay, I don't know if that's very effective, because there was a report filed against a few people uh, that I was given a copy of and informed of that was given to Mr. Kern, it was followed up weeks later after they heard no response, to which he stated, and he actually met with these people as well, and he stated that he had no memory of the complaint or the meeting. Do you care to expand on that, Mr. Kern? Mr. Kern, are you sleeping like boots or are you awake?
This isn't my meeting.
Well, I'm asking you a question, this, this could be another lawsuit.
I answered them.
Yeah, you're too worried about your deep throat challenges, right? Disgusting, yeah. So if someone is a deputy in, in office, and first deputy, I don't wanna pick on, I don't wanna pick on you. But if somebody's the first deputy in an office, let's say randomly they get paid fifty thousand plus benefits. They worked a hundred hours all of last year, would they be fired?
That would be at the role.
So.
Because they appoint their first deputy.
And they have the ability to hire and fire and discipline their.
So if the rest of that office was in disarray and came to you and said, listen, our workload's too much, we can't complete the jobs that are required for this office, we have attorneys breathing down our throats, the work can't be completed, is there something you can do? You're saying that you're just gonna turn it over to the role, you won't do anything?
No, we would have a meeting with the role officer to try to be.
So what are you guys doing then in the efforts to get Ms. Gaffney to work or get her out of the office? Have you had a meeting with the D A? Have you done anything with the state, with the representatives to try to get her impeached? Is there anything you guys are doing, because now you're saying that something would be done if it was a deputy?
Jeff, I'll, I'll be honest, I don't, with my public mission. I haven't had any complaints on that office other than you.
Well, I'm a taxpayer, okay?
Yeah, they're just saying.
And there's plenty of people.
There's no attorneys.
There's plenty of people that are pissed off that she worked less than a hundred hours last year.
Well, no, you're saying about the office being in disarray and that they're.
Oh, there's attorneys, yeah, yeah.
Really? I haven't heard anything other than what you bring up.
There's a delay because she will not train people certain, on certain aspects of the job to be certified to complete it. So therefore, she must be there when the jobs are done. And it's creating a controversy for, yes, they're, if they're not contacting you, then I'm not sure. Maybe they, people think they get more answers from me because you guys aren't here a lot.
No, we're here.
So the three of you, I'm asking you formally, would you guys support an investigation into Teresa Gaffney's inability to come to work?
I don't think we have the legal authority to investigate.
Would you support an investigation, not done by you, would you guys support one on behalf of the taxpayers to investigate why she's not able to come to work?
Who would investigate her, David, I don't, this is uncharted territory in the way. If there's sixteen twenty acts, it's under the Pennsylvania Constitution, so I don't know who, it would be the Attorney General's office, I would assume.
I would assume it would be the Attorney General's office, I don't think you have the authority to, to even.
No, they, all I'm saying is, do they support it, an investigation? Not saying that they would do one or en- engage in one. Would they support one on behalf of the taxpayers of school county? If I get this ball rolling and I get the investigation open, will you guys support an investigation on her inability to come to work and frauding the taxpayers?
I just don't think there's anything to investigate.
She showed up for a hundred hours last year and got ninety-six thousand dollars of taxpayer money.
The remedy for that is elections. Teresa has.
That's another three hundred thousand dollars she's gonna get from the taxpayers.
She has been elected to office three or four times now.
I don't care, she's not at work.
No, I've been hearing for how many years that there's gonna be lawsuits against her, she's gonna be arrested. She, all this stuff.
There are lawsuits, there are.
She's never been arrested, she's never been impeached, she's never, I, I, I don't know many.
Look at TNT liquidations, look at Fekla, her.
Have they went anywhere, are they still on the way lawsuits?
Yeah, there are, there are open ones, and her family's still fighting.
But that's personal stuff, there's nothing to do with.
But she used her, but she used her position as register of wills with her business card during things that are unethical as well. So, yeah, there are still balls rolling, but my thing is, her inability to come to work, I'm not talking about anything outside of previous. Her inability to come to work and take a ninety-six thousand dollars a year benefits package from the taxpayers, and you know wholeheartedly, or you look to that office and ask the people, was she here more than a hundred hours last year? And they say, no, you're gonna sit here and say, you don't think there should be an investigation?
The reason I'm saying that is because under the Pennsylvania law, the role officers are allowed to set their own hours, the officer. It's an elected position under the Commonwealth Constitution that she is allowed, any role officer is allowed to set their own hours. They're, under the law, the constitution, the Pennsylvania constitution, it's an elected position that she's allowed to, any of them, any of the officers are allowed to set their own hours, come and go as they please.
So you as commissioner chairman are saying you are okay with her working, on average, two hours a week to collect a ninety-six thousand dollar year benefits package from the taxpayers?
The voters of Schuylkill County voted her.
I'm, I'm just clarifying it, you are not, you're, if I get this investigation, you would not send a letter of support looking into it.
If somebody has an investigation, I'll follow whatever, if it's the Attorney General's office, whatever they instruct us to do or everything.
Would the.
I would support it, but I'm not gonna say, me as Larry Corora, uh, as chair, I don't have the authority to do any investigation.
Would the commissioner send a letter of support towards an investigation?
I don't see what there's an investigation.
Well, then why don't you let the, why don't you let the A G clear it up? If you guys think there's nothing wrong, why would you not?
That's what I'm saying to you.
Okay, so if I get the Attorney General's vote, will you guys send a letter of support, send we, we open, we welcome this investigation?
If the Attorney General wants to do an investigation, just like they, you did with Lisa Stevens?
Right.
And you weren't happy with their conclusion.
Well, hang on a minute, what conclusion? How can I be happy with?
Why don't they reported the.
How can I be happy without a conclusion?
But what I'm saying to you, Jeff, is the Attorney General will have to do that. And if, if the Attorney General would do an investigation, just like they did with Lisa Stevens, we would follow whatever they say, Jeff.
You guys are ineffective, you're falling right in his, right in his footsteps.
No, no, we're not, Jeff, it's the law, they're elected positions.
Okay, so you're okay with ninety-six thousand dollars?
If you were elected to one of those positions, I couldn't come to you and say, Jeff, you have to be here, you have to punch a pine card, you have to be here fifty hours a week. I couldn't do that.
Well, I know, because.
You don't have the authority.
I know, because you guys are falling right in that line, but anyway.
Yes, I know, Jeff.
Right, so, well, I, listen, I challenged every elected official for the month of March. How many hours do you work? Not one person could turn anything in, so that proves a lot right there.
No, you didn't work anything at all in March, none of us did anything.
You weren't here when I came in this morning.
Yes, I was.
Anyway, as far as the coroner's office, what Gary questioned, and then Mr. Bender followed up on, my math must be a little different than Scoopla County math in the courthouse here, because he had ten thousand dollars budgeted. He's requesting an additional twenty-seven thousand dollars from contingency from the taxpayers for this that was never voted on formally. Okay, it was increased and told that this is what he was going to do. And then it was backdated, which we were never backdating again, now we're backdating for this. So he's asking for twenty-seven thousand dollars more, which, when I went to school, ten thousand plus twenty-seven thousand would be thirty-seven thousand. Now, if you take his twenty-five hundred monthly rent and multiply that by twelve, when I went to school, that was thirty thousand. Where's the extra seven thousand dollars?
Commissioners, there was some debate whether you were going to backdate the contracts. I asked Paul to put enough budgetary authority in that line item to cover that if there was.
But we didn't back, we didn't go past last year.
Thirty thousand, we're not paying more than.
Okay, so then why?
We didn't go back to two thousand and twenty.
Why not just request the twenty thousand, then? We knew, we knew that it wasn't going to be backdated past. Why does he need the extra seven thousand?
As of last week's meeting, we weren't sure what that was going to be. The contract that was presented to me was backdated to several months.
Last week was, last week was January, the same thing was voted on. Last week's was January, because I questioned why it was going.
My explanation, I asked Paul to put that in there.
Yeah, we asked Paul. Then what the rent is for the year ago.
So do, so do the taxpayers get that seven thousand back?
Well, it just.
It was spent.
Or is he going to, or will he just roll that over?
No, it was never authorized, it was never spent, so it was available, it was never spent.
So it's twenty-five hundred dollars a month from January to now.
I get that, right.
Yeah, so it was just budget for that amount, so that seven thousand will be applied. Will be returned to the general fund, or, I guess theoretically, you could apply it towards the future monthly rental, theoretically.
Right, but then you're always going to have that seven thousand rolling over.
Well, no, I'm just saying it could be used for that, that's it. To get him to thirty, whatever the yearly rent is, thirty thousand, you said, right? Twenty-five, thirty, so, yeah.
So then next year, he'll only be requesting twenty-three thousand, if I'm doing my math correctly.
Well, I don't think we pay him on a year, month, or year.
Commissioners agree to a contract next year at twenty-five hundred dollars a month, the budget will be thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand, okay.
Okay, now where's that extra seven thousand from this year? That's what I'm asking.
Goes back to the general fund, we've explained that now.
It goes back to.
No, you didn't, you said it one time.
No, it goes back to the general.
So why, then why give it to him? Why not just make it the twenty thousand?
It wasn't given to him, Chair.
It wasn't, because, it was authorized because.
It's authorized.
He requested.
Zero balancing on the, on the fund, the budget. So actually, that gets why it starts all over again. So whatever's left is not a carryover in his office.
Okay, well, we'll have to follow up with that, because.
Okay.
Any other public comment for?
Melinda Dybert, North Mannheim Township. I would contend that if employees have complaints that need to be filed against perhaps a fellow employee, or perhaps even a supervisor, rather than filling out a written complaint and filing that with Human Resources, they might be better served to contact EEOC directly and file their complaint that way. And perhaps we could save some of this, I don't remember, I don't, I don't think we had that conversation, don't remember a complaint being filed, et cetera. Have we not learned anything when we have a current sitting county administrator and past Human Resources directors, and, and we'll have to wait to see with Jane Doe, I don't know, I've lost count at this point, five, to see if Tony's going to get pulled into that lawsuit? Have, have we not learned that perhaps some of these people who have actually been named as defendants in federal sexual harassment lawsuits, maybe those aren't the best people to be fielding these complaints that would be filed? Can we maybe agree on that? Oh, okay. Gotcha.
We're, we're.
You're pondering?
We are complying.
You're pondering?
No, we are complying with the dissent decree on our, for how they follow.
That's a sad state of affairs. If the only reason that you are observing certain practices.
Doesn't help get your point across, just a little. So they, we abide by the dissent decree, what we have to put in place, the new training, new reporting, new everything, there's a procedure, and you are correct, they have the ability to, they're not comfortable going to certain people, they can go right to the EEOC. They can, they can also go, I can't remember, there's another step, they can go directly to, I'm having a brain freeze. There's another avenue that they can go to with it through the dissent decree.
Well, I find it interesting that not more than five minutes ago, your county administrator stated that if an employee wants to file a complaint against another county employee, supervisor, et cetera, coworker, what, what have you, that the procedure is to file a written complaint and submit it to Human Resources. I didn't hear.
Depending on what the situation.
I didn't hear option A, B, or C on that.
That wasn't what was asked. What was asked was.
What's the procedure?
No, he asked, is there a formal paper that can be filled out?
Is there? What's it called?
You can also file a divorce document, there are anonymous complaints that can be made, and now you draw the follow-up with that as well.
Yeah, there's a way to do an anonymous complaint, and then if there's an actual form, there's a form, or they can just submit.
What's the form, what's the form called? Just so I know.
What's our form, tell me, do we have a form? No, it's just a written complaint. So somebody writes out a complaint, and then write it out, and then they submit that. So you want an actual form, like, how do we, how do you create a form that has?
There's a lot of counties that stand on this.
How do I have to do it?
A lot.
They have a way to do it, we are abiding by the dissent decree that was ordered through the lawsuits.
Isn't that pitiful? Isn't that pitiful, that we have to be mandated by a consent decree instead of bucking up and doing the right thing? Wow, okay, another thing, sticks in my craw, can't wrap my head around it. How did ex-commissioner, Commissioner at the time, George Halcovich, receive protection and insurance coverage for his sexual proclivities and antics that he performed right here in Scoopla County Courthouse? So did C-Cab and P-Corp, did they all like, yeah, we're fine with that, we'll, we'll, we'll cover that? What he did is considered a deliberate tort. How did he get coverage for that? Which ultimately, county taxpayers are on the hook for some of that. It's outrageous.
Well, I, I gotta abide by what the laws are, what.
What, what are the laws? Did we, did we receive a written decision from the insurance company stating that what he did meeting females after hours, or perhaps even during work hours?
Took the claim on. They paid, the insurance company said, this is what we have to do, and they.
So nobody in Scoopla County, none of the commissioners who were in office at that time even questioned it or said.
Oh, no, 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 we said that, we questioned that.
They questioned it left and right.
So did you, Boots, did you get a written decision then from the insurance company?
No, we went by one of our attorneys, our county solicitors, because we asked, when I got in office, I was asked.
And that would have been who, Paul Dotty?
Paul Dotty, there was Glen Ro, Glen Ro, and who was Al Marshall.
Al Marshall, right.
Right? It was those three solicitors, which we have two new ones, David Rice and Shelby, and Paul's still here. But I questioned everything as soon as I came in, why have we covered this, do we have to cover?
Well, it's interesting.
Hold on, but I was told, the insurance company by P-Corp, that it is, they have to cover it, he's indemnified. He was an elected official when it happened.
He was an employee.
And he was an employee. And so he was covered, we couldn't sue his home insurance, because I asked, I asked if we could go, he was never arrested.
I don't agree with that, I do not agree with that. Legally.
Legally, that's what I was told by.
I myself was sued by a county employee when I was county controller, and guess what? I was told by P-Corp, no coverage, your homeowners has to pick up the tab. So how in the heck?
Were you sued personally? No, wait, listen, I just, I'm not going to rehash, the lawsuit is behind us, it's time.
No, it's really not, it's really not.
Yes, it is.
Jane Doe five, really? That's been taken care of?
I haven't filed a lawsuit yet, so I don't, I don't know what you want to tell me, what you want us to say. I can't go backwards and change anything, it's happening.
Sweep it, sweep it, I'm not rushing.
It's over. George Halcovich committed these acts, and he is not a commissioner no more. There's nothing, there's nothing, the same old things, he was an elected official, he was never charged, stuff was so egregious, and, and he was repugnant for what he did, but there was no, there was no charges against him.
Why was the Pottsville Police Department never contacted?
Well, I'm not going to relive the entire George Halcovich saga. If you want to live in the past, focus on that, the Scoopla County's.
If we don't learn from the mistakes of the past.
We have learned.
No, we have not, no, we have not.
Because you don't think we have, because you don't think we have.
Taxpayers on the hook once again.
Thank you for your public comment. Human Resource Office.
Uh, yes, Commissioners, in Human Resources, eliminate the position of HR Specialist Assistant Risk Manager, effective five, seven, twenty-five. Create the position of Risk Manager slash HR Specialist, effective five, seven, twenty-five. And set salary of Heather Garrity as the Risk Manager HR Specialist at the rate of fifty-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars, thirty-five cents, effective five, seven, twenty-five. In the prison, set salary for the following three people, Michael Buchanan, Warden, at ninety-five thousand, effective five, twelve, twenty-five. John Bowman, Deputy Warden, at ninety thousand, effective five, twelve, twenty-five. And Kyle Fair at Captain, eighty-four thousand dollars is the rate, five, twelve, twenty-five. And the following wage increases in the prison, Baron Line, Captain, eighty-five thousand, five, twelve, twenty-five. Matthew Rose, Lieutenant, eighty thousand, five, twelve, twenty-five. Juan Escalante, Lieutenant, eighty thousand, effective five, twelve, twenty-five. Thomas Obed, Lieutenant, eighty thousand, effective five, twelve, twenty-five. Corey Bowman, Lieutenant, eighty thousand, effective five, twelve, twenty-five. And Corey Saddle, Lieutenant, eighty thousand, effective five, twelve, twenty-five. In adult probation, incentive pay for the following four people, Charles Beganski, Chief Adult Probation Officer, five thousand dollars, effective three, four, twenty-five. Jeffrey Polinsky, Deputy Chief Adult Probation Officer, four thousand, effective twelve, twenty-six, twenty-five. Daniel Snellpack, Adult Probation Aid Part-Time, one thousand dollars, effective five, thirty-one, twenty-five. And in addition, there is an attached list of all the other employees in adult probation, and the dates and amounts of their incentive pay. In Planning and Zoning, create the position of Intern, effective five, twenty-one, twenty-five. And also in Planning and Zoning, set the salary of Alex Darlington as that Intern, at the rate of fifteen dollars, effective five, twenty-one, twenty-five. And District Attorney, set salary for Luke Joyce as a clerk, eighteen dollars an hour, effective five, twenty-seven, twenty-five. In Juvenile Probation, set salary for five site coordinators, their names are William Mondrayne, Kelly Goodman, Donovan Copeland, Lauren Hammer, Jenna Van Fleet, the rate is fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents, effective six, two, twenty-five. In the Controller's Office, eliminate the position of Accountant Auditor Fixed Assets, effective five, nineteen, twenty-five. And create the position of Accountant Auditor Associate, effective five, nineteen, twenty-five. And set salary for Accountant Auditor Associate, the rate is fifty-one thousand and eight dollars and six cents, effective five, nineteen, twenty-five. Angela Morris is the person being appointed to that position. Also in the Controller's Office, wage adjustments, Sudhir Patel, Solicitor, the rate is three thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy cents, effective five, nineteen, twenty-five. That is all. Okay, so.
We have a motion for the three Human Resources, the nine prisons, and the four adult probation.
Yeah, but we have to do them separately, so, do I have a motion for three Human Resource?
So move, sir.
Second. No question?
Commissioner Codora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
First Deputy Controller, Pocenta?
Yes.
Okay, motion for the nine prison requests? I'm sorry.
You can do adult probation in prison.
Not the nine prisons and the four adult probation.
Well, it's not, it's more than.
Just do the prison.
Yeah, let's just do the prison by itself.
Nine prison requests.
Second. No question?
Commissioner Codora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
First Deputy Controller, Pocenta?
Yes.
And then for adult probation, a motion for the first three listed and attachment of how many is on there? Thirty-three, thirty-three attached.
So, so move, sir.
Second. No question?
Commissioner Codora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
First Deputy Controller, Pocenta?
Yes.
And Judge Russell?
Yes.
Is there any new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.